Good evening, and thank you for viewing the February 1st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. The first item on our agenda this evening is land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Tonight, we have the Scouts from PAC 95, Troop 15, and Sea Scout Ship 1 to perform the flag salute. So, welcome Scouts, and we will follow your lead in the flag salute.
Audience, please rise. Audience salute, or place your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, forward march. Color Guard, halt! Color Guard, cross the colors. Color Guard, post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color Guard, return to ranks. Color Guard, baut face. Color Guard, forward march. Color Guard dismissed. Audience, please be seated.
Very efficient. Thank you Scouts, I appreciate it, and we will be acknowledging you in a few more moments here. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Shaffer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Adkan Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Present.
Oh, present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. And for our first public comment, the early oral communications, there are some cards up here for the first four people. We only have 15 minutes in that first time period, and we will take the first four here, then move to Zoom. And if we have more time, we'll come back to in-person. If you are logged onto Zoom, you can click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. Or if you are on your phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone to unmute. For each item, we will be taking the in-person public comment first, and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you want to comment, line up at the podium, or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. Item number four on our agenda this evening is ceremonial matters. And so we have a proclamation recognizing February 5th through 11th as scouting anniversary week. And we have our in-person recipients here. And Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Meredith Matthews will be reading this proclamation.
Thank you so much, and I'm honored to read this scouting. The love of scouting runs deep in my family. My husband was a scout master, the Cub master for PAC 95 for five years. So, it's great to see you guys here. So this is a proclamation recognizing February 5th through 11th, 2023, as scouting anniversary week. Whereas Chicago publisher William D. Boyce founded the Boy Scouts of America on February 8th, 1910, after learning of the scouting movement in London. And whereas in just two years, Boy Scouts were enrolled in every state, and in 1916, the United States Congress granted the Boy Scouts of America a federal charter. To date, there have been more than 126 million scouts across America, and over 2.43 million of which have achieved the Eagle Scout Award, scouting's highest rank. And whereas the purpose of the Boy Scouts of America program is to develop community members who are physically, mentally, and emotionally fit, have a high degree of self-reliance and resourcefulness, personal values, the desires and skills to help others, and a keen respect for basic rights of all people. And whereas scouts are taught the principles of the US social, economic, and governmental systems, and are prepared to participate and provide leadership in American society through active civic engagement. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata recognizes the 113th anniversary of the Boy Scouts of America, designates February 5th through 11th, 2023, as scouting anniversary week in Arcata, and expresses appreciation to the scouts, their families, and the many volunteers of the Cub Scout Packs, Scouts, BSA troops, and senior scoutships of the Pacific Rivers District of the Boy Scouts of America for their dedication to our local use. Thank you to your efforts. Hundreds of young boys and girls in Humboldt County are getting the support, friendship, and mentoring they need to lead successful and fulfilling lives through scouting. Updated February 1st, 2023, by Sarah Shaffer, Mayor.
BSA Troop 15, I'm honored to accept this proclamation recognizing scouting anniversary week. We appreciate the city of Arcata's continued support for scouting, and look forward to another year of providing service back to the Arcata community and the surrounding environment. Thank you.
And thank you for being here. We appreciate all you do in our community as well. All right, our next item on the agenda is early oral communications. The city council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or for staff. Speakers may be limited to two minutes. There will also be time for public comment on each specific agenda item, and again, at the end of the meeting, under item 12. So please make your way to the podium if you are here in person and have one of those cards to make your comment, or if you are on Zoom, press *9. I saw people grab the cards, so let's, come on, let's go. They're numbered, so whoever has one, go first, and then two, and then three, and then four. Thank you. I appreciate it.
My name's Darren Ferrera. I'm a dairy farmer and also the owner of Ferrera &amp; Son Dairy Bottling Plant down here in Arcata Bottoms. Started running into a little bit of an issue with glass bottles. Glass bottles, you know, Arcata, everybody, we'd love to have them, but they're hard to get returned. The other problem that we're having is getting them from Canada, because that is the only factory that makes these glass bottles in this bulk that we can get. Shipping is killing us. 4,000 bottles, it cost me over $3,000 just in shipping. So, you know, $250 at the store that I'm charging for these bottles doesn't even cover it, and I'm losing money on it. So what I've been trying to propose for the last two years, I've been trying to talk to individuals that are already in the glassmaking that want to expand their businesses, a glass factory right here in Humboldt County, a small maw and paw, where not only do we make the glass for the breweries, for myself, for, say, Strauss, Rosa Brothers, the wineries, but we also make it the recycling center. So take away that trucking. Humboldt County is all about being green and being eco. Well, let's take away some of that trucking, and let's make that factory recycling, and make a product all at the same place. So that's why Arcata Co-op has told me to come to you guys to propose this, because you guys have the power, and maybe even the funding, to be able to get this going. So, that's why I'm here tonight. And it would help us keep our business going, because that's the only thing that's keeping our dairy afloat right now, is being diverse and selling our own milk.
By chance, did you bring your card with you that you could leave on the table?
No, I don't have any business cards, but I will leave you contact, yes.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Right, yeah, and you can just leave the card on the table. Perfect. Okay. Take it away.
Good evening. I asked you to see the editorial in last week's Mad River Union. It's also in the editorial section of ArcataOne.com about building heights in the Gateway Plan. There's three different local experts, for three different reasons. Believe that anything over four stories is not likely to happen, not economically viable. If you haven't viewed Danko President Chris Start's Ollie presentation, please do. There's a full transcript of the presentation on ArcataOne.com. In terms of the Gateway Plan, what are our goals? I see it as housing that regular working people can afford, homeownership. Currently, there's no schools, playgrounds, or parks, other than the park that's slated for where Ring Inflatables is, and whenever they move away, which is also one more reason for the L Street Linear Park. All these are people-oriented needs that are part of the promises of the Gateway Plan, but not likely to occur unless we actually take some action. But what bothers me most is much of what we are seeing is ordinary. It lacks humanity, lacks innovation. Seven months ago, I spoke to the Planning Commission about the prospect of actually requiring homeownership opportunities in the Gateway Plan. There's no law that would require it. What I said was, let's do something bold. Let's not do something normal, or we're just going to have more of the same. Even if it means creating new law, I think the state of California is ready. I'll give you a handout later that has more of the quote. I'm also on Arcata.com. There's a really innovative building in Berkeley. It's the size of Searl Park, but it has twice as many units, twice as many people. The entire roof is a farm, not just a garden, but an actual farm. It won an AIA award. That's what we want for Arcata. We want the L Street Linear Park as an example of innovative design. I say let's make some decisions and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. All right, next commenter, please.
Howdy, howdy. So last month, I came to council, and you guys saw an appeal on our plea with the council to rethink a proposal that had been sent to the Planning Commission and approved to be something that's more centered around healthy human living. Today, I come to you as a tenant that has just been served a notice of eviction for, let's see, no-fault eviction. So, in 60 days, I'm looking at being homeless, as well as all three of my adjacent neighbors. Now, this is completely within the law, it's funny timing, but for myself and 64% of the people who live in Arcata, this is a real threat to our livelihood and just way of being. If someone can be evicted at no fault of their own at a drop of a hat, that presents a great amount of instability for the day-to-day life. So apart from AB 1483 and the Costa-Hockings Act, there's no protections for renters in Arcata. You know, these are the blanket laws that cover renters in California, which clearly offer little to no protection. So what I'm asking the council is to put something on the agenda that codifies protections for tenants. You know, what that looks like is up to you and public input, but we need something to protect the majority of people who live here. 64% of Arcadans are renters. So with the gateway looming on the horizon, and more and more opportunities for landlords to increase their holdings, I'd like you to really take a look at what you can do to help people like myself in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anton Souza. I'm here today as a representative of the residents of Ross Street to address pedestrian safety in the Arcata Elementary School Zone at the intersection of Ross and Grant. Between September 23rd and October 8th of 2021, the Transportation and Safety Committee conducted a traffic audit of Ross and Grant Streets in the Arcata Elementary School Zone. This audit verified our fears that a large number of vehicles were driving the wrong way on Grant, which is a one-way street. And it also documented that 60% of the vehicles were exceeding the speed limit, some driving upwards of 50 miles per hour in the school zone during school hours. Since then, the city has painted stripes and an arrow on Ross Street, which is a designated dead-end street and not an entrance to the school. These have proven futile in calming or diverting traffic. The only traffic calming measures thus far that have been effective were a large flashing sign stating "dead end, do not enter", and the use of traffic cones to highlight the painted stripes. Although these measures did not deter all infractions, they did increase awareness. But alas, the city has long since removed them, and the infractions have risen once again. Recently, speeding cars have driven across lawns and even on the sidewalk during school hours. We have seen citizens killed in crosswalks and on sidewalks in our neighborhood. Please take strides to protect our students, our families, and our neighborhood. We request that the city designate Ross Street as either a cul-de-sac or a one-way street, as Google Maps has already done, or provide a traffic calming initiative such as a speed bump or a raised crosswalk in the school zone. And let me remind you that every single household on Ross Street signed such a traffic calming initiative in September of 2021, and we have yet to see any measurable improvement. One simple thing that the city can do in the meanwhile is place 15 mile-per-hour school zone signs on Baldwin and Grant Street. Currently, the only school zone sign in the whole neighborhood is on Ross, the dead-end street that faces traffic that legally should not even be entering the school.
Yes, two minutes. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that comment. Is there anybody online?
There is one online speaker.
Well, so we had our first four here, and then we moved to online, and so...
Hello, I'm watching on YouTube. There's no video on the city council, on the website for the city council. I'm watching on YouTube, and there's a delay, so I didn't know I was up. And I really want to comment on the consent calendar. So could you get those videos up, because people aren't being allowed...
We haven't even made it to the consent calendar yet, okay? I will, you know...
I know, I know, but you also do not have videos up on your website, and it's very important that you get those videos up, so people know when making comments, because there's a delay. Okay.
We're looking. Thank you for letting us know.
Just to let us know, MinuteCheck, our software that operates on our website, is struggling. We are up on Zoom and on YouTube. Zoom would be the most real-time live, and if not, we are just on early oral communications right now. But that call-in user, I will hold for your consent calendar item and make sure to pull you up.
Do we have any other public comments for early oral communications on Zoom?
None online.
Okay, so we do have a few more minutes then to take anybody else who's here in person. I saw a couple people stand up that were interested in in-person, early oral communications. We can take three to four more speakers, depending on how fast you go.
Hi there, Luke Besmer, relatively longtime resident of Arcata. Wanted to just voice support for what we heard earlier. Gentleman that said we should have, if we have a recycling facility, we should figure out something to do onsite to process what we can and produce more products here. Just makes perfect sense, creates jobs, recycles recycling stream. Secondly, the gentleman that said that we need housing opportunities. We need opportunities for people to buy homes here. Massive amounts of apartment complexes are not going to help build long-term stability in this place, which goes to, so we need small, you know, small homes that people can purchase. And it kind of goes, supports the lady that talked about rent control, or not rent control, but you just can't get kicked out of your place. If you're going to go ahead and build a bunch of big apartments, well, what we're trying to do here in this town is establish long-term stability with our residents. We need to have residents that feel safe and comfortable in their homes, so they can invest in their long-term futures, as opposed to be worried about whether or not they might get kicked out at some point in time. So a couple things there is, yeah, we need something to help these renters out, so they can stay in their homes without worrying. And secondly, we need to develop more opportunities for people to buy homes here, so they can start families and really help to build this community up. Lastly, I don't know if it gets talked about in the other meetings. This is my first time coming to one of these things. I hope to do it a little bit more. The homeless encampments everywhere, they're getting pretty bad, and it's only going to get worse faster. And I'm not sure if there, you guys have to be talking about this, I imagine. But if there isn't a plan that at least is being worked on, we really need to get something happening here, and getting some good minds and people on it. Because otherwise, in three years, if we don't do anything, this is going to be a very difficult place to be, to call it a nice place anymore. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, James Adam Taylor, nice to see you again. To reiterate points that have been made already, a candidate for city council last year, who is a business owner, myself a business owner, do not have protections, we are probably going to have to leave this town. We are civically engaged citizens. We are the type of people you want in this city. Because of our lack of protections for no-fault renter eviction, very good chance, we believe, other people that I know in this community have left for similar reasons. Take that to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other in-person commenters?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I come here often, so I wanted others to speak before me, but I'm glad to have the opportunity. For the Scouts, I brought another flag, my peace and love flag. A lot of people comment on it when I walk around with it. I also carry an earth flag occasionally. But today, I wanted to talk a little bit about the power of three. This is another things the Scouts might be interested in. The triangle is the strongest shape in the world. And when we're talking about building, the geodesic dome that Buckminster Fuller created many, many decades ago is one of the strongest kind of structures in the world. So when we're looking at housing, we should not think, we should think outside the box, and think in terms of triangles and earthquake strength, and really creative grounded design when we're thinking about adding to our community in terms of architecture, and community building, and housing, and even businesses. And so I just kind of brought this visual, because I'm a visual learner, and so maybe some of you are too. So my words, sometimes I don't think sync in, so sometimes I like to show the picture. to show the picture. But the other concept of three, I brought three oranges, and I just, I'm a juggler, and I can juggle three oranges, but I can't juggle more than three. And sometimes when we ask organizations to try and do more than they can really handle, they drop the ball. And I think a lot of you know what I'm talking about. We really need to broaden our resources, and the community needs to add others willing to help in situations such as homelessness. And so the power of three, let's change how we do things. No more business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we usually don't applaud, but thank you. It's positive. I like the applause. Okay, any more in-person public comment before we wrap up early oral communications? Okay. And just a quick response to some of the statements that were made. I have been researching and talking to staff about expanding tenant protections, and maybe this is now, since it's been brought up, a good time to, if anybody else wants to jump on the ship with me and direct staff to, you know, continue that research and bring something to us.
I will jump on that ship with you.
Beautiful. Okay, I think it only takes two.
Are you talking about evictions?
Well, before getting into, there's a lot of great tenant protections that happened under COVID that really could be expanded to all of the time and also to all different types of construction, especially new construction, that are not officially on the books for all of the state of California. In some communities, they have expanded those protections. And so, yeah, evictions mostly, but rent stabilization as well and other tenant protections.
Well, if they've lived there for more than a year, they definitely have protection.
Again, sixty days is not very long. Okay, so again, to not have a discussion up here, I think there are at least three of us that want to direct staff to do a little bit more research on that. So that sounds like a consensus to me. I see some nods. All right. Thank you for oral, early oral communications, folks. Okay, we are now going to move to item eight on the calendar, which is the consent calendar, and get to the meet and the business part of this meeting. All matters on the consent, and thank you for being here. And if you do have to go, sometimes we can get lengthy, so do not feel awkward if you got to sneak out at any point. But again, thank you for being here. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items, and if discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A is to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of January 18th, 2023. Item B is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 18th, 2023. C, bi-weekly report on disbursements. D, adopt ordinance number 1559, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending Article III, short-stay vacation rentals, Chapter II, Title VI of the Arcata Municipal Code, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Item E, adopt ordinance number 1563, amending the Arcata Municipal Code, Title VIII, building regulations to adopt Chapter V, electric vehicle charging stations permit streamlining, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Two, find that adoption of ordinance number 1563 is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines for the reasons stated in ordinance number 1563. And three, adopt the residential and non-residential checklist for permitting electric vehicles and electric vehicle service equipment. And item F, adopt resolution number 223-31, authorizing an application for a $250,000 regional early action planning grant. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item F.
Okay, so we are pulling item F. Any other members of the council or staff or members of the public would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay.
Did you say B?
E, as in Eric. Okay, we are pulling item E.
Call-in user, did you have an item from the consent calendar you wanted to pull?
Well, it's already been pulled. It's item F, and thank you for pulling that.
Okay, great. We will get to your comment when we pull up item F. All right. So do I have a motion to approve items A through D on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve items A through D.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Vice Mayor Matthews and a second from Councilmember Wyatt. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those pass unanimously. We will now move to item E. So we will take comment on that. Joanne, if you want to come up and state why you wanted to discuss that one.
Is this the electric vehicle charging stations?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm excited that we're talking about EV charging stations. I had the opportunity to walk around town, as I often do, but out to the community center a couple of days ago, and noticed the charging stations there. I know the charging stations near here. I don't know where some of the others are. But also in social media, as I'm roaming through, and I get a lot of people commenting on renewable energy and climate-changing adaptations, I really wonder why we don't include solar rooftop with our charging stations and putting those in automatically. Because where we get our electricity from those charging station matters to many of us. So it's not just about the cool, groovy, new ways to fill your tank, so to speak, of your automobile, your electric vehicle, but it's also where that energy is being, is coming from. So solar energy panels above those charging stations is really something that we ought to be jumping on real soon. You know, it's going to be soon mandated. Why wait? So let's get going on that, and hopefully RCA can appreciate that concept as well in their portfolio discussion of energy. So I don't know if this really directly applies to what you're talking about here, because all this language and numbers and stuff confuses me, but we need, we need renewable energy in our electric vehicle charging stations.
Thank you for bringing that point up, Joanne. All right, are there any other public comments on item E?
I will just share with the council that while we can always look for additional renewables for our portfolio, the city does purchase 100% renewable energy for anything above and beyond what we can generate on our own.
All right. With that, I would move for adoption of item E.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman, second by Vice Mayor Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so motion E passes. And then we will now, or item E, motion E. We will now move to item F. Kimberly, if you want to start with why you pulled that?
Sure. So the minimum for the REAP grant is $200,000, and I'm told that this can't be pulled apart, which would have been my preference. I want to preface that I'm going to vote for this because I am very much in favor of workforce housing, which is the $200,000 portion of the request for the REAP grant. The other $50,000 is the Turner Lab, which is the dashboard housing. And I am, you know, presented last time some of my concerns. I'm still concerned. I hope I'm wrong. But, you know, another concern is that we are going full steam ahead and going to be committing another, or committing $50,000 of public money on something that we have no idea how that's going to be. We were offered this free try-before-you-buy trial, and I had hoped that we would do that before we would commit to a further MOU for the two years. But it is in a one proposal, and like I said, unfortunately, it cannot be pulled apart, but I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Just a point of clarifying questions. This is just for the application for the grant. They might not give us that money, correct?
That's correct.
I just want to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to say that at the end of March, I'm attending a CivicWell conference that I'm really excited about, and Turner Labs is going to be one of the people that are presenting that. So I'm really looking forward to bringing everybody's questions and concerns and speak to them directly, but I really am looking forward to their presentation and looking forward to see what they can bring to Arcata.
So where is that conference being held?
In Monterey.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe we have an online comment regarding this item and any other public comments regarding item F. Now is the time. So take those comments.
Okay, okay. Thank you for taking my call. I feel like you're pulling a fast one on us here, because last time you said that the $50,000 was supposed to be after we did the MOU's free portion. So why is it on the consent calendar for $250,000? The, I support the medical workforce housing, but the $250,000, the extra $50,000, after you had said that we had a free period, and now you're suddenly, it's suddenly on the consent calendar? I'm sorry, I just think that's inappropriate. It shouldn't be on the consent calendar. And I think you should pull those two items apart, because that's not what you presented to the public the last time. You talked about the Turner Housing Database. So, so please, you know, consider pulling those two apart. I think this is wrong, and I think it was misrepresented to the community. And I appreciate everything you're doing, but, you know, come on now. Thank you, anyway.
Yeah, David, if you want to, or Karen, you want to just clarify this point of confusion. But again, this is just a grant application, which we did discuss at our last meeting, that we would apply for the grant to hopefully get funding to then, after the year trial, pay for the program. And so this is not us paying for anything. This is not giving Turner Labs any money. We're just applying for the REAP grant to maybe get that funding to be able to then, if it's working well, and we want to continue through it, to be able to pay for that.
I think you said it perfectly. Yeah, yeah. I was just going to clarify. I think this is exactly what we talked about at your last meeting. The first year is being developed with grants that the Turner Lab has, and that we did talk about that we would be turning around pretty immediately to file for this grant and adding in the potential for those two more years of support services for that product. In part, the heavy lifting on staffs and the city part is going to be to get it up and running in that first year. And so if it is successful, I think we're not going to want to have missed our opportunity to apply for potential funds that would then keep that going.
Could I ask a quick question? So saying we might not be satisfied with that first trial period, and say hypothetically, we were awarded that grant, and we decided not to go forward, would we have to give the entire REAP grant funding back, or could we decide not to do the additional $50,000 only and still keep the awarded amount of $200,000 for the open-door workforce housing?
Yeah, I think we can never guarantee what a grantor is going to say, but if we found after, you know, six or nine months, and we were having concerns about the product, I think it would be our due diligence to go to our grantors and say, you know, we applied for this money based on what we thought was going to be returns. It's not returning. Will you look at this program with us and see if we think it's valuable for your money? And work with them on that. And I think they would continue to support the other portion of the grant. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions or comments from the council, or we will entertain a motion on item F?
I'll make a motion to approve item F.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Matthews, second from Councilmember Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. That moves us into new business. There is no old business. We're going directly to new business here. So item A is to receive an update on the city's trail system and take action as appropriate, and we will be having a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkorn.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm just going to take a minute to get the screen loaded up. Great. Well, to continue, the goal for this agenda item is to provide an overview of our city's trail system and its management and maintenance by the Environmental Services Department. We'll have some fun photos and maps to look at, so hopefully that will aid in the discussion. But I think the main thing is that Arcata community really values and utilizes our trail system. And I think one of the main benefits of that is trails really provide opportunities for connection. So whether that is amongst families that are out recreating on a trail off, not anywhere near cars, whether that's students walking to school or Cal Poly, whether that's people commuting eventually between communities as we're heading into, hopefully, in the, by summer of '25, being connected with Eureka with the Humboldt Bay Trail. Trails really also provide connection for people to be outside and in nature and in our natural areas. Also really provides connection with our actively managed properties, so more fully understanding the multiple benefits we're managing for on the community forest, the multi-benefits we're getting from the Arcata Marsh and our treatment facility. So I think that's the key thing for trails. They're infrastructure, but they're also really about bringing people together. So we have a really diverse trail system. We have over 40 miles of trails that we maintain every week, every day, every month, and make updates to and expand. So we have seven and three-quarters of miles of paved trails, including the three-mile Humboldt Bay Trail North. We have over two dozen of trails in the community forest for hiking and question use and mountain biking, nearly five miles of natural surface trails in the marsh, plus neighborhood connector trails, including the second picture from the left is the new really cool bridge over Janes Creek connecting the recently developed 30th Street Project to the Janes Creek Meadows subdivision. And because we have this diversity of trails, I did want to take us on a quick tour of what that looks like, kind of in an overview. So here is a map showing our paved trails in purple, our soft surface, natural surface trails in blue, and we'll zoom in on a couple places that we all, probably most of us have been to. But the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary, again, about five miles of trails can make tons of great loops. The community forest, you know, both the marsh and the community forest have really put Arcata on the map as a recreation destination and as a great place to live. We've recently completed the Ridge Trail connection between the main community forest track and the Sunny Bra Forest. This past year, our crews have completed the Peanut Butter Trail, which is kind of this one, and two-thirds of the Jump Trail, and these were two mountain bike-specific trails with which we've been developing with Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association through an MOU, and great sustainable trail design from our staff here. The 30th Street Project will zoom over to Alliance Road, and the bridge is over Janes Creek here. And that, again, connects to a really great little neighborhood trail system around the Janes Creek subdivision, and that connects to parks. We also have a number of connector trails that really help provide that non-motorized connectivity between our neighborhoods and that are really heavily utilized for a number of, you know, commuting and recreation needs. So this one connects to the Sunset Neighborhood up at north from Alliance. You know, you'll see just down the road, another one off Stewart Court connects up to Anina. And then we'll zoom over to Cahill Park, which connects through Cahill Park up to Arcata Elementary. So just wanted to give just a brief tour of what some of these places, especially kind of topography, look like throughout the city. Great, so we have all these trails, but how do people know where they're located or how to utilize them? Really, in this last year, following community feedback, Environmental Services has increased our signage and information available for people to learn more about where to go, how to navigate on each of our trails, and also to get more specific information for user-specific trails. Like the kiosk here is at the start and the junction, top point of our mountain bike-specific trails, the Jump Trail and Peanut Butter Trail, and provide more information to that user group. You will see down in this green little box on the kiosk is a QR code, and you'll see these throughout the marsh on all of our park signs at our 30 parks and throughout the community forest on the trail markers. And so this is one way that we're really getting the, where people can utilize that Q... utilize that QR code and pull up Avenza-ready trail maps, and so when you're on your phone, even if you don't have cell, cellphone service, you can see where you are in the forest and therefore navigate your way downhill, um, to an exit. Um, we have utilized press releases, have a couple videos up on the city's YouTube page about how to utilize our trail system, um, and share our trail system with multi, multiple users. Um, we've implemented more sign, you know, physical signage in the forest as well, that was in particular where we've gotten, um, more feedback, um, about a year ago. Um, so this is just an example of when you pull up an Avenza map, um, for the community forest, we also have an Avenza-ready parks map and marsh map. Um, the last thing with signage, just wanted to give a glimpse to, is that we're currently working with other local jurisdictions, with the Humboldt County Association of Governments, on some new consistent Share the Trail signage that will, would eventually be across our regional trail system, so across the Humboldt Bay Trail, Eureka Waterfront Trail, um, within Fortuna, Rio Del for their new trail that they're developing along the Eel on the Hammond Trail, that really emphasizes the, um, multiple users that use, use the trail and the need for trail etiquette. Um, so this is just a, a mock-up of what that could look like in this next year to be implemented across our jurisdictions. So we know that, um, we have 40 miles of trails, limited budget to maintain, so what are some of those opportunities and challenges that we, that we face? Um, since we've really prioritized connectivity between neighborhoods, um, and really connecting to our public access areas, you know, we know that, like many public entities, there can be challenges of keeping up and meeting expectations for a level of maintenance on, in any of our, um, facilities. So funding for trail ma- maintenance and our city staff really comes from multiple city funds and dovetails with stewardship of our community forest, stewardship of our marsh and, um, treatment plant, uh, dovetails with, um, solid waste management, um, and kind of some, you know, storm water management and more of our, our open space lands. So we have multiple, um, city funds that support city staff, but really of, thinking of numbers on the ground, um, we have two full-time natural resource staff that, um, maintain the 25 acre, um, 2,500 acre community forest and the marsh. We have four, um, full-time parks staff plus part-time staff and one parks facilities natural resource supervisor. So a lot of this gets done with less than a dozen people, and not just maintaining trails, but our 30 parks and our many, many, uh, hundreds of acres. Um, one key thing want to, that we want to note is anytime that we're designing, um, new trails, that we're maintaining current trails, we're looking for those key trail design parameters to ensure that feeling of safety on our trails, and some of those are really ensuring site distance, um, by maintaining vegetation along the trails, um, lighting where appropriate, particularly on commuting routes, um, you know, along Foster and through Shea Park are some examples of highly used, you know, commuting sections, um, on the Humboldt Bay Trail. Um, connectivity to adjacent streets so that you know, okay, if I have to get off the trail, where do I go next? Um, and really having helpful signage and ensuring access for emergency vehicles. Um, a key thing that we're also always looking for is really striving to construct universally accessible trails where, when, where we can, and particular around our parks, connecting between parks and neighborhoods, and then our topography, it gets more challenging in areas of like the community forest. Um, but a key opportunity is really our partnership with, um, many community partners for trail maintenance. So we would not be able to maintain, um, the number of miles of trails that we do without key community partnerships. So one being with the Humboldt Trails Council, the Volunteer Trail Stewards, and, um, they have been maintaining trails throughout Humboldt County with local jurisdictions for over a dozen years. They have 11, at least 11 workdays a year, um, between the marsh, um, city parks such as Shea, um, and the community forest. So here's some photos, um, of their last worked, not la- but the last workday before the latest, the final segment of the Ridge Trail was opened. Um, so they work on vegetation maintenance, improving trail tread, rocking and graveling trails, and it has been a fantastic collaboration, um, and with hundreds of, and thousands of volunteer hours. Um, two other, um, super important partnerships have been, um, with the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association, um, they have really helped conceptualize and implement the Peanut Butter Trail, assisted with the Jump Trail, again, mountain bike trails on the, um, in the community forest. Um, they've also recently provided pro bono engineering, um, design for the pump track for the Redwood Park Improvement Project. Um, also Friends of the Arcata Marsh, we've had a longstanding, um, relationship and Foam volunteers staff the Arcata Marsh Interpretive Center, um, they have roving naturalists, um, put on many events, lead organized walks, and really, um, helped to educate users of the marsh, um, not only about stewardship of our natural resources, but the integration with our wastewater treatment plant. They, um, also maintain doggy pots within the marsh, so active, on-the-ground stewardship as well. Um, we also have three active Adopta Park volunteer efforts, um, one is with Kuna in Valley West, another is with an Arcata resident in, um, the marsh, um, and a more recent one has been with a neighbor at the North End Alliance Trail. And so this has been, um, a program that we've started a bit more in the last, um, year, um, when interested volunteers have come to the city to say, I walk, you know, these trails, or I live right next door and I'm, um, always kind of, I'm picking up trash, is there a way that I can, you know, more formally assist the city? So these are volunteers, um, and put in the application for what they would like to do, um, what materials they may need from the city, and our parks, um, staff support, um, those efforts with, whether that's gloves and trash bags, trash picker, and then also the disposing, um, of, uh, solid waste. Also, um, graffiti abatement, um, and providing, uh, paint and other materials, um, has been another volunteer, much appreciated volunteer effort through this, um, as well. Um, and I'm just focusing on, um, trails today, um, but also, as we have many in the room, our scouts have been, um, wonderful stewards of our open space lands, whether that is on the, our South Jacoby Project or more recently in the Sunny Bra Park. So, um, with all of that volunteer, um, work on the ground is indispensable to, to our city and to our community. Um, so planning for future funding and partnerships for maintenance is really essential when we're expanding the city's trail system, um, you know, as we know, anytime we add a new city facility, whether a new segment of trail or a new line of street trees, that is additional maintenance, um, to take on. We, um, the city has been, um, successful at, um, receiving many grants for planning, design, and construction, um, but that really does not come with maintenance funding. But also providing these quality-of-life resources are a key thing that then, um, hopefully also contributes to economic development and increase revenues to the city. So always thinking of how we're expanding, um, and its potential positive impact on the city. Um, I think for, so just for touching on our priority trail projects for this year, um, the final segment of the Ridge Trail was completed November 1st, we had a great, um, ribbon cutting, and we will still have ongoing maintenance, um, on that section, as with all of our sections of trail in the forest, particularly during the winter. Um, and then our Arcata Annie and Mary Trail Project, um, last week was allocated funding for the next phase of design and ride-of-way. Um, so we'll be keeping those, um, moving forward. For, um, just touching on, you know, funding in the long term for maintenance, um, you know, with the passage of Measure A, the Open Space Parks Trails Special Tax in November of 2020, that really provides, um, had so much community support, um, and really provides opportunities for stewardship, um, acquisition, really taking, um, uh, being able to take advantage of funding opportunities, um, with cost share, but also having a fund that for if we really need some, uh, uh, further repairs that we can fall back on, um, as potential stewardship funding. Um, another fund that was developed across the region was the Humboldt Bay Trail Fund. Sorry, it's as simple as it sounds, apparently, um, and that is hosted through the Humboldt Area Foundation, um, and has, um, is guided by a committee, um, of local jurisdictions and at-large community members, and the purpose for that was really, um, of the same concern, if we can get grants to build the Bay Trail, but do we have enough ongoing funding for maintenance, especially when larger repairs may need to happen? And so that is a funding source that has grown to, um, I think, oh, nearly 500,000 or was before more, um, around, around there, um, that really provides a place for supporting volunteer maintenance of trails, but also for those larger ticket items, um, if that, you know, happens with, uh, larger storms or, um, a need for a repair on a bridge. Um, and so the, that's just another funding source that the region has to really work together so that we can continue to expand our regional trail system. So that is an overview, I'm happy to, um, answer any questions or delve into any more areas that you have, uh, specific interest in. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you Emily, very comprehensive overview. Um, we will turn it over to the council for questions, if anybody has any questions.
I have a couple.
Yeah, start us off.
Couple things, um, first, I personally want to commend Foam and the community volunteers for the incredible work that they're doing at the Arcata Marsh. I was out walking my dog the other day, and it was gonna be one of my extra-long walks, have lunch, hang out, and, um, in particular, George was out there, working for hours, cleaning up, and with a smile on his face. So I just really want to applaud, um, all of the workers and, uh, in particular, George out there. And then I had, and, and I don't know, um, while it's mentioned in the policy implications section, I was wondering if it might be appropriate to add, um, the only city of Arcata access to the Mad River Trails, uh, which is Carlson Park and Valley West. I know that, like I said, it's in the policy implications, but I'm wondering if we might wanna include it also in, or instead in the introduction portion of the document? And also, I am just beyond, over-the-top excited about the new grant, which is gonna be going in there and doing trail restoration, uh, at those trails to the river access, and, um, the, the new signage that's coming up, which is gonna be multilingual, including the Wiat tribe. And that's all I have.
Wonderful. If any, I'll, you know, I, I don't, I'll go last, that's usually how it works, right?
I was just going to mention, you mentioned the, uh, K Street up to, uh, Baldwin area up in Sunset, so have things been resolved with him? The neighbors up there that are really concerned about the, uh, activities happening on that trail?
Yeah, um, so this is the connector trail between Alliance and North that heads up towards Western, and last fall, um, several council members and myself met with, um, neighbors there. One of the neighbors, um, has, is now a, a volunteer, um, supporting his immediate neighborhood, um, with graffiti abatement and trash pickup, so again, that's in collaboration with our parks, um, division. Um, and we, since that time, um, have received less, um, calls, but it is an area where we, um, since, again, that fall, we worked on maintenance for the stairs along that route, um, and some more site distance, uh, vegetation management. Um, so I, it's an area that we're gonna keep our eyes on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So following up on what Kimberly said, you know, George volunteers on his own out at the marsh for about at least 10 hours a week, trying to keep things up. Besides, he works at the, uh, Interpretive Center, but he, his work out in the marsh is all volunteer.
Um, I just wanted to, I mean, uh, Director Sinkorn did a great job of acknowledging all of the community partners, but I wanted to focus on that a little bit more, um, just to really bring the point home, that, that, that's a big part of why our trail system is so great, and a lot of times when people come to us with ideas, the response that they get is, you know, that's a great idea, but the city can't do that alone, we need some community partners. This is a great example of what we're talking about when we say that, so if we do have the buy-in and participation from the community, we can really get a lot more done. So, you know, thank you to the community for that and for also passing Measure A. And I just had two quick questions. Um, one was, I think the, the trail that Councilmember Stillman asked about, that was one of my questions too. Uh, I think when we originally talked about it, it wasn't, it's not city property, and I guess that was my question, if, if that is city property, and if it's not, what is our policy for maintaining trails that are being used regularly, but they're not our property? So that was my first question.
Great, so that area, um, between Alliance and North is city ride-of-way, and it is city ride-of-way from when that subdivision was created years back. Um, I, I think in, in talking with, um, folks with longer institutional knowledge, it sounds like it was, um, you know, it was a ride-of-way that was never developed as a roadway, but was a, uh, quicker connection, and so over time, um, foot travel creates a little foot trail, and then, um, at some point, the city did, um, augment that with more, um, sustainable trail features and more, you know, safe trail design. So it is city property, it is maintained as a city connector trail.
Right, thank you for that clarification, and this is a mu- a really important question. How did the name Peanut Butter get picked for that trail?
Um, and for, that would be a great, um, uh, unfortunately, I should have that answer. Um, I, I think, um, there were, and maybe Karen does, I think there were some, um, you know, it was historically used, um, before the city acquired that property, so it has a long history of being used as a mountain bike trail, um, just with the type of surface, some places I could see how it could be named Peanut Butter, I don't have that history, um, but part of the, again, once the city acquired that property, the priority was to ensure the safety of that trail is number one, number two being, um, it being sustainably built, um, so that there wasn't as much erosion, um, and so that we could maintain it, um, more feasibly in the long term.
Yeah, I'll just add, for a long time, there was, uh, a portion, what was called the Forsyth Trust property, that really looked like you felt like you were in the Arcata Community Forest, but it was private property. So both parts of the Jump Trail and the Peanut Butter Trail were on that private property, they were named by folks that just built trails, you know, the, uh, property owners allowed that on their property, they allowed disc golf on their property, but it in fact wasn't public property. So, um, as Director Sinkorn mentioned, we've upgraded those trails and we're working to rehab them, but we left them with the names that the mountain bike community do.
So if I could just, I'll follow up with one thing that went, the last phone meeting I attended, um, the naturalists are all going to start carrying buckets, just like the ambassadors and a, a pickup stick, because they're finding a lot of needles, and so they wanna pick up that kind of trash and they wanna get it out of the way. So, um, they made a decision that the naturalists will have their own buckets and their own pickers.
Yeah, and we have talked about when we get training again for the ambassadors, that if the naturalists, or obvi naturalists would like to go through that training with our program, just as background and information, and that would be something we offer too.
Um, well, I had a couple comments and a couple questions. Um, first of all, big shout-out for the Avenza app, it is absolutely amazing, if you have not used it, like, you can even not have cellphone service that knows exactly where you are, it works offline. Um, I made, I'm a, I'm a teacher, so I get summers off, I made the point last summer to go out with my dog on a new trail that I have never been on, um, every time I would take him out walking, and there was a couple times where I maybe got lost in the woods a little bit, but having that, just like right there to pull it up, it's an amazing tool. Um, so for anybody listening that hasn't tried it, you should download it, it's free, it's wonderful, and I'm glad that we, you know, run that, it's a great app. Um, a couple questions, or maybe just things that I've heard from people. Um, have we had to address or develop maybe any policy on e-bikes? And how, um, that, you know, A, on the, the Bay Trail, a lot of people on that paved area, I mean, just take it so fast, but also, um, I've heard a lot of concerns from people just up in the community forest, especially people hiking and not expecting all of a sudden, this whizzing bike even uphill, you know, going right by them, and so, I mean, have we developed any policy on that, or how do we en- enforce, you know, speed limits on these trails?
Yeah, um, when I mentioned the Share the Trail signage- Yeah, when I mentioned the share of the trail signage collaboration with HCOG and other local jurisdictions, that conversation started from, what do we do with e-bikes? And then it evolved into more of how do all the different trail users interact and respect one another on, on our trails, both paved and in the forest? The key thing being speed and that bikes that don't have power can be going just as fast as e-bikes. For e-bikes on our, on our city trails and also just of mirroring what is in kind of state code, and that state law is shifting and changing. But there's three different classes of e-bikes. And Class 1 bikes go up to 20 miles per hour. Class 2, similar, but they have a throttle where you don't have to pedal. And then Class 3 can go up to something like 29 or... And, and so for what we're really, in conversations with trail managers across local jurisdictions, we're really seeing that e-bikes are how many more people are getting around. It is especially on our paved Humboldt Bay Trail and commuter trails, it's an effective commuting tool. So we're really thinking of that education around speeds and respect when passing and how to do so respectfully and safely, and less on regulating classes of e-bikes. You know, currently, Class 1 and Class 2, but when I say currently, that was at least like two months ago at the state level, that you could be on a Class 1 trail, which is what the Humboldt Bay Trail is, and be on a Class 1 or 2 e-bike. I think that, and I did not look that up before the meeting, but I think there will be or already is some state law shifting where local jurisdictions, unless they ban it, can, like Class 3 bikes can be on those transportation-oriented trails, too. In the community forest, we have in our draft, updated forest management plan that we hope to bring to your council before the end of this calendar year, the recommendation of Class 1 and 2 e-bikes being acceptable in the community forest. They often look just like other bikes. And so that is, we're really, with all of our signage, the PSAs, the videos, the education, we're really trying to provide that education for all users. Speed limits was another question you had, and in that HCOG group, we also had discussed having speed limits. Some jurisdictions do. Marin County has, has adopted an ordinance around speed limits. That is another tool we could utilize, but from, you know, reading other case studies and talking with other jurisdictions and just our capacity for enforcement of speeds and being, and having someone out there to clock a bike going 16 versus 15 miles per hour, we're really focusing the efforts on the education.
I have one more, just general comment of something that I've heard from people, a request perhaps, that has to do with trails. Just multiple, a couple residents and then also business owners in the Creamery Building have requested doggy pots on that section of the Bay Trail, because that's pretty residential. A lot of people use it to walk their dogs, you know, coming from their houses in that area. But also, a lot of people hang out in that grassy area and a lot of traffic from the pub and back and forth. And a lot of people who I hope want to clean up after their dogs are not able to, just because there is a lack of bags and trash receptacles there. I know I have unfortunately been in that same situation and had to, you know, go home and find a bag and come back. And so, yeah, that would just be a nice request, if that's possible. And then, yes, Alex, questions?
So I just wanted to bring up, because I noticed there weren't any scooters, but that's something that is going to become, I think, more prevalent here, where people are riding those electric scooters. And we have some around now, and there is companies that actually manage them or pick them up when they're left in different parts of town. And I'm thinking that might be something that you want to discuss, because they'll end up on the trail systems, too.
Yeah, there has been, first Fortuna, and then Eureka has partnered with Bird for e-scooters, where then local contractors maintain, maintain them. That is, you know, something if the council is interested, so it's similar of a, of a bike share, but it's dockless, so it, you know, can be left anywhere. They can be, jurisdictions can provide more of geo-fencing for where jurisdictions don't want scooters parked. I'm picturing like right along the business districts of the plaza of North Arcata. And that is something that the, you know, if the council is interested, we could, you know, the city could really entertain. So far, our, from Environmental Services, we have, at the time, have been recommending continuing with Bike Share for its reliability and safety record and expanding our stations. The engineering department has recently expanded four new stations. And so that's providing even more connectivity. But for scooter, but many individuals have scooters, and it, to me, it shows that there is a real interest in further ways to get around, rather than just a single occupant car. And so really looking at how we're designing our future streetscape for those vehicles, because they're not a bike, but they're not a pedestrian. And where, where do those fit? And to me, those are, that's why it's helpful to, you know, really be designing for complete streets, as we're doing at the last meeting, that we talked about 8th and 9th Street and eventually having wider sidewalks and that bike lane that can serve that other type of user on the street.
Well, thank you, because I know it's, I'm sure it's going to be coming to us. There will have the, the Bird Bikes are the company that does that. And, and I've noticed a couple just lying, I don't know where they came from, but they just dropped them. And it's very, very true, when I was in Barcelona, the same thing, you know, there's two people riding them, they're riding right along with traffic, they're either single, you don't hear them, and they're just dropped all around, and then you see a vehicle going and picking them up. So that could happen to us, too.
All right. Well, thank you for the good questions. Does staff have anything else they want to add before we take it out to public comment? Okay. Well, we will now take public comment on this item. So if there's anybody here in person, we will do in-person first. This is the time for in-person comments. Head up to the podium and line up, and then we will move to online. And if you are online, you can get ready and raise that digital hand.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I love trails. I was a National Park Ranger in the Presidio and at Muir Woods in my earlier life. And trails are wonderful things, and I love walking on them and I love working on them. So one of the things, I'm going to do the power of three again. When we're talking about the great apps that people have, I want people to also remember that some of us choose or don't have the ability to have an app. And so I'm hoping that there will be some opportunity for maybe enlisting people up at the university to create paper maps. It's never a bad thing to learn how to read a paper map. So I don't know if that's in the works or not. So I would like to say that. Secondly, I love working on the trails, and I've tried to participate, and I think I shared this story before, to work in the trails up in the community forest. And I was thinking there was a way that I would meet people at the city hall, and then there would be some sort of shuttle taking me up Diamond Street to this trailhead where the work was happening. And it was a day that the buses weren't running regularly or whatever, and so I ended up walking to the bottom of Diamond and then waiting for a bus there, thinking there might be a bus going up Diamond. But of course, there's no bus going up Diamond. So I walked up Diamond, made it late to the trail work, and was able to get a ride from someone. When I asked the Trails Council about shuttles to trailheads for people like me that either can't or won't, don't want to drive a car individually to a site, they said that that was beyond their ability to do and that I could just go down to my neighborhood trails on the marsh. Well, that's fine. I will work on the marsh trails, too, but I wanted to go to the community forest. So enabling some of us who don't want to drive a car or can't drive a car to a trailhead, the opportunity to do the trail work would be something really well, nice to have. Thirdly, Mayor Schaefer. After you've read our local newspapers, whether it's the North Coast Journal or the Mad River Union or the Time Standard, when I was working on the Presidio, the dog-walking companies who would walk the dogs on the Presidio found that newspaper is actually as good as a bag. So you can use your newspaper after you read it for other purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, last call, anybody in person. This is public comment about the trails, and this is the last time in person we will take comment on this item. Thank you.
Hey, guys, I love trails. I've actually volunteered over 1,000 hours of very serious, hard trail work in national forests, so I absolutely love them. Our trail system is phenomenal, but I want to make sure that as we expand our trails in the community forest and throughout our community, that we're doing it in an ethical manner. If it's included in conditions for approval for another project, let us think and make sure that it's an apt condition for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any comments online about the city's trail system?
We do. My first one is from Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thanks. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. Really, I just want to take this opportunity to thank city staff for their hard work on various trail projects. As you all know, CRTP is mostly focused on trails that can be used for commuting or transportation purposes in addition to recreation. And so we're particularly excited about the Annie and Mary Trail beginning hopefully soon. And also just wanted to point out that the construction on the last four miles of the Bay Trail under the county's jurisdiction is of course going to be finally starting this year and hopefully finishing. And that, that trail, along with the Annie and Mary Trail, will hopefully lead to a substantial increase in use of commuter trails within the city's jurisdiction. So I hope that we are excited and preparing for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Any other online comments?
Hey, our last public comment is from Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello to council and to staff, and thanks to Director Sinkhorn for the update on the trails. My conversation tonight, of course, is about the L Street Rails with Trails in relation to the L Street Linear Park. Once again, I would like to encourage the council to move forward with the designation of L Street Corridor as Linear Park as the primary corridor for the Great Redwood Trail. The existing trail is Class 1, as is most of the Humboldt Bay Trail, and will be the Annie and Mary's Trail. The degradation of the Rails with Trails at best represents a Class 4 trail, a trail with a fence. The Creamery District can be the centerpiece of the Great Redwood Trail through Arcata, offering a park-like setting and access to existing and future services in the form of food and other local businesses. In addition to the Great Redwood Trail, the California Coastal Trail also runs through the L Street Corridor as its primary route and states a policy that the California Coastal Trail not run directly adjacent to a road, for example, a Class 4 trail. Since the existing Rails with Trails Corridor is already established, acquisition is not necessary. The trail is eligible for rail banking through Rails to Trails and would be seen as a positive step for the Great Redwood Trail, the California Coastal Trail, and the Federal Service Transportation Board, since the typical outcome from rails banking is rails to trails and not the expansion of a road. Other rail banking offers an increased footprint, which would expand the possibilities for the L Street Linear Park. The 2010 Rails with Trails feasibility study offers what is possible for the L Street Linear Park. Under Trail Amendment, starting at 10-1, there are maps and images through 10-6, which offer a vision for the Linear Park. The corridor is the main artery from Cal Poly down to the marsh. And just wanted to also iterate, reiterate that the Linear Park is endorsed by the local Sierra Club. The petition is ongoing and overwhelming signatures is, interest is the abandonment of the two-way couplet and the enhancement of the open spaces into a Linear Park. Anyway, I thank you for your time and hope it's something at some point will be considered. And I'd love to talk to anybody about it if they wanted to have a conversation, and there's lots of information available at arcatalinearpark.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any more comments?
I had a hand up, but it went down. No more public comment.
Okay. At this point, we will then close public comment on this item. Does the council have any last-minute thoughts, questions, comments, or anything like that? All righty. Well, we don't necessarily have to take any action on this item. It was largely informational, so thank you, Director Sinkhorn, for the wonderful update, and thank you, community members, for your feedback. Does anybody need a break, or we're just going to power through? Okay. Let's do it, then. Okay, we will now move to Item B under New Business, which is to consider adopting Resolution Number 223-34, implementing an emergency homebuyer assistance program for community land trust acquisition and authorizing a budget appropriation to the fund, to fund the program in the amount of $130,000. Can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loa?
Yeah, thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to invite my, our partner, and as an honorary staff person for tonight, Beth Motzamoto. You can come on up here. We'll be presenting together, which I think is apt, because the community land trust really has been a partnership from the beginning with, back then, Humboldt Bay Housing Development Corporation, currently Housing Humboldt. And so Beth, the executive director for Housing Humboldt, will be helping to convey some information to you. I do want to, of course, you know, throw a curveball right at the beginning of the staff report by reporting to you that we actually have a different recommendation than what is in the staff report for you. Part of the, part of the problem that we'll explain to you is that the program changes in, that elicited this original emergency program, I guess I could say the plot thickened as we dug into it in more detail. And so what we're going to be asking for is actually to, you know, take the staff report, receive public comment, and then hit the pause button, and we'll come back with a recommendation, new recommendation. We'll get some guidance from you tonight as to, you know, how to, how to structure that next recommendation. But things, things radically changed since last Wednesday, when the staff report was submitted. So just want to hit real high level, just to give a context for, for the decision that you'll be making tonight. It's a really important one. I know that a lot of people have been really interested in the land trust model. As it says in the policy section, the community land trust is a way for, you know, reducing the cost of homeownership. It really provides an opportunity for folks who aren't yet ready for, you know, open market or, you know, even a, you know, purchase through the city's standard homebuyer program to be able to get into housing that they can make payments on and start to build equity. And so it's been a, you know, real winning program for a number of years since we began the program. But many of the tools that we've used to finance and operate and maintain the program, keep it sustainable, have fallen away over time. And so that's part of the problem that we'll describe to you tonight and try and describe some, some potential solutions. The city of Arcata initiated the, and I'm going to save much of the land trust history to Beth, but the city of Arcata initiated the land trust in partnership with HBHDC back in the early aughts, I think. And the, the program was developed around the city's redevelopment agency primarily. Redevelopment agency at that time had a share of the, the city's tax base that it could use to put towards housing. There was a requirement that we used at least 20% of our revenues from the redevelopment agency on affordable housing. And so we created a lot of really unique projects and a lot of really new, unique programs that, that were really contingent on that, that ongoing funding source. In addition, during those early years, we developed the program around guidance that we were getting from our home program, the Home Partnership Better State Grant Program. And so the home funding was really an important part of financing these for the individual property owners. And in the, you know, last five years or so, those, those resources, well, gosh, I guess it's getting close to the last 10 years or so at this point, those resources have really fallen away one after the other. And as we'll describe in a little more detail, the challenges with the home program and why we're going to ask for, for you to hit the pause button coming up. So with that, before I get too into the detail about the, the history, I want to turn it over to Beth and have her describe to you... it over to Beth and have her describe to you their involvement, and really what, how the program is structured, and why we've been using it, why it's been so successful. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. First time city staff person. Honorary. Again, my name is Beth Matsamoto. It's nice to be here. I am actually the Director of Multi-Family Development for Rural Communities Housing, and formerly, the Executive Director of Housing Humboldt. In 2019, Housing Humboldt became an affiliated entity of Rural Communities Housing, so that we can sustain our mission to develop and manage housing for low-income households in Arcata and throughout rural northern, northern California. So I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank David and city staff for navigating the complexities of the community land trust, and ways to finance such a program. The Humboldt Community Land Trust will be 20 years old this month, which is just shocking to me. But it really is very much a result of the collaboration between Housing Humboldt and the city, and previous city council support. So, I'm here to provide a brief, a brief history of the community land trust and how it works. So, in February of 2003, a working group convened to analyze the land trust model, and how such a model might address the community's need to not only assist low-income households wanting to purchase a home in Arcata, but also to preserve the affordability of the home from one owner to the next. The working group's feedback and participation helped inform a strategic plan, and in partnership with the city and the home program, Housing Humboldt acquired and developed its first eight community land trust homes in the Winsong subdivision in 2005. At that time, the city of Arcata's First Time Homebuyer Program wasn't keeping up with the rising home values. The community land trust, however, offered a solution that locked the public subsidy in the land, and to preserve the affordability of the homes for households who were really priced out of the real estate market. So, under the CLT model, the nonprofit acquires and holds the land in trusts for the community to provide needed resources, such as affordable housing. Buildings on the land are sold to eligible households with a leasehold interest in the land that's conveyed through a ground lease. The ground lease specifies various rights and responsibilities, including a resale restriction, which is meant to give the owner a reasonable return on the original investment, but is also there to keep the home affordable to another low-income household. In other words, CLT homeowners have an opportunity to earn a limited amount of market equity, as specified in a formula you use to calculate the resale price. Today, the CLT has a total of 22 homes in the city of Arcata. In addition to the original 22 first-time owners, we have facilitated an additional 14 resales, and the majority of those owners have sold and purchased another home in the community or in another community. Our last 10 homes were developed in the James Creek Meadow subdivision, just before the capital seemed to dry up overnight. If the construction project went any further into the 2008 financial crisis, things would have been very different for Housing Humboldt and the land trust. But in partnership with the city of Arcata, the homes were finished, and 10 low-income households purchased their very first home in a neighborhood where home values were more than twice than, twice as much as the CLT home. So due to a number of constraints, however, we haven't been able to increase the number of CLT homes since then. We have been fulfilling our stewardship role in ensuring that the homes remain affordable. So now that many of the tools, as David mentioned, we once used to finance single-family development, and provide home, homebuyer gap assistance have changed, we need to pivot and reanalyze how to move forward. David's gonna speak a little bit more about some of the proposed, proposed options, but before he does, I think it's important to point out that the community land trust model is a unique tool for communities to, to retain local control of land and resources, such as affordable housing. The model works throughout California and the nation to resist gentrification and promote economic equality. It makes sense that the city of Arcata is one of the first California communities to create a community land trust 20 years ago. The CLT has come a long way, and we are committed to carefully looking at all the options before us to make a thoughtful and informed decision. So thank you for your attentions tonight.
Thanks, Beth. Yeah, so that, you know, gives sort of a broad brush stroke, and just to recap, Housing Humboldt owns the underlying land, the city helped acquire that land, and then we sell with these resale restrictions to new owners as, as the, the properties sell. So, we have kind of a long history working with the home program to work through the challenges with these resale restrictions. There was, in around 2015, there was a change at the home program that was largely administrative, that started pointing towards some, some concerns around the resale restrictions and concerns around the home program's ability to continue to administer CLT model. At that time, we, we, meaning the city of Arcata, and Housing Humboldt, both worked really hard with our, our home reps to try and find a way through, to navigate a way through, pointing out the fact that while we had, you know, wild ambitions to, you know, develop approximately 100 homes in Arcata that were under the CLT model, and at that point in time had, you know, approximate the 22 that we have now, that removing that critical source of funding, the home program that we were using to fund all these individual home sales from our, our tool belt, would cripple the, the CLT model. Most of the homeowners cannot afford, even though the, the borrowing that they're doing is less than it would be on the open market, because they're only purchasing the improvements, and those improvements are resale restricted, most borrowers do not have the ability to get a full 20% down payment, and then balance a loan through the private market. So they rely on the city's gap financing through its homeownership program to, to, you know, to fill in that gap, to get that extra money that they need to, to get into the home. In 2015, the home program said we couldn't use home funds anymore. We worked through that together, and made it through for another couple of years. We went through this again in 2017, and the home program said, well, we're sorry you can't use these on CLT models. We did the same work that we did in 2015 and 2017, and were successful at having them agree to allow us to continue to use home funds for at least the 22 that we had in the program to date. And, you know, we are, I was commenting to, to Beth, as we've been scrambling over the last week to try and find solutions that, that could, you know, get us through this, this challenge, that we're, we're basically, we're dealing with the exact same issue all over again. So, there are, there is some possibility that, you know, we will be successful in navigating this again. The, the resistance that we're getting at the home program seems a little more stringent this time. It's a different tenor and a different character. So I'm not confident about that. But the original reason why we brought this program forward is because the home program actually has all of its homeownership programs on pause throughout the entire state. HUD is reviewing their program and trying to ensure that the way that they've been implementing it is compliant with HUD regulations, and so for the past eight or so months, we haven't been able to use our home program at all. So the idea, last week, when I wrote this staff report, when we wrote this staff report, I enlisted Beth's help to, to polish it, we were thinking, well, all we need is a, a program to get us over the hump while home works out their issues, and then we'll be back in the situation we were in after we successfully won the argument in 2017, that we can use these home funds to finance individual home sales of CLTs that are already in the We had a discussion at the staff level, and we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, heading in the right direction, so we reached out to the home program, and they said, no, in fact, you can't use home program funds for any CLTs. And they identified the resale restrictions, again, they did this in 2017 and 2015, as one of the critical issues, but then also pointed to some other interpretations that they're having around the, the federal regulations. And so, we're waiting to, you know, sort, working with the home program, waiting to sort those issues out, Beth and I kind of brainstormed and came up with a couple alternatives. And what we'd like to do is to, you know, have a discussion around these alternatives, and try and get some direction from the council, because what we do next is really contingent on which way we're leaning for these alternatives. So we basically have four options, four primary options. Each option has a different, a couple of different flavors. We won't go into the flavors unless you're, you're interested in discussing those in more detail. The first option is basically to leave the community land trust as it is, as it's currently written. We've got, you know, underlying regulatory agreements, we have, you know, agreements with, loan agreements with, with Housing Humboldt, we've, you know, there's a whole legal framework. It's gonna be a lot of work to unwind or change the program. If we did unwind or change the program, I wanna note that we would do it one home at a time, as those homes come up for sale, so this wouldn't be a big dramatic change for those individual buyers. Everyone who's in their home right now would be able to remain in their home, it would not affect them in any way, shape, or form until they sold their home, and then when they sell their home, those sellers will not be affected, it'll just be the program that shifts if we change it. So the first option is keep the program just like it is, but find other sources of funding. And so, we've been pursuing that. Cal Home is a funding source that we've never pursued before. It's a source that Housing Humboldt may be eligible for, or the city may be eligible for, and we could find, you know, replacement financing to continue to run the program just as we've run it in the past. That'll take some time to, to wind up, because we don't have Cal Home, we're not currently applying for a Cal Home. I frankly don't even know, I know they have a NOFA out, but I don't know when the, the applications are due, so there's still a lot, lot to figure out. So that's the first option. Leave, leave the home, or leave the CLT model as it is, stop using home program funds to finance it, and try and find another grant source of funds to do it, because we don't have local funds that will allow us to continue to run this program. The second option is to keep the CLT model, we'll continue to run it as a land trust, but dramatically change the way that it functions. And so, some of the critical components that home has a problem with, the resale restrictions, for example, maybe we just modify those out. So we change the program, remove the components that home has an issue with, maybe also continue to pursue other alternative financing, because home is still a little bit, you know, sporadic. We don't necessarily always know that we'll have that, so we'd develop a more robust portfolio for how we finance these projects. And so, that would result in retaining the, the concept, the underlying principles of, of the CLT, but just pursuing other ways of operating it, given the changed conditions we find ourselves in. The next two options really are a complete shift in how we use the program or the houses that have been acquired through the CLT model. Both of those options that I've described to you before require that we come up with, for most borrowers, this gap financing. So we have to have an ongoing program that allows those, those new borrowers, the new home buyers, to use our program funds, or maybe Housing Humboldt's program funds to fill in that gap financing. Because we don't have 100 units, like we would have liked to have had, where you would have a lot of activity within that program, you really don't have a whole lot of activity. You have maybe one, you know, every other year that sells, or, you know, for some reason it's up, up on the market. That makes it a little difficult unless you have a real robust housing program that you can just throw in a CLT project for, to maintain that, that, that program. Usually, for example, for a grant, you go out, you get a grant, and you have the grant for two years, and you do a bunch of activity on the grant, and then you don't have the grant anymore. We receive program income back when those homes sell, we get the, the loan money back for the gap financing, and then we can turn around and lend that to another borrower. But if we don't have the activity level, so that those are happening regular enough, so that we have funds in our bank accounts, then the program isn't as stable. And this has happened several times over the past five years. In fact, Beth and I were just reminiscing about the past five years, trying to solve this exact same problem in different variations. We've, we've had this come up a number of times. And so, you know, recognizing that the program, even if we start to develop additional funding sources to finance these projects, still doesn't have the volume to maintain a real consistent program, and we may find ourselves in this situation in the future when we don't happen to have a Cal Home grant, or, you know, haven't, you know, don't have access to home funds. So the third alternative is really dramatically shifting the model. Right now, it's a homeownership model. Those same units are, can be used for affordable housing in a rental model. And so, completely unwind the land trust and focus instead on single-family rentals. The majority of Housing Humboldt's rental, rental units are in apartments. This gives people another alternative, it still provides affordable housing, and we, Beth and I have even explored, you know, is there a way to develop an equity share, you know, with that? So it still retains some of the, the benefits of being in a program where you, where you develop some equity. All of this is very speculative at this point, I don't want anybody to latch on to, you know, those ideas, because we're not sure exactly how we would implement those. That's why we need the next couple of months to really brainstorm. Beth and I will do some, you know, some financial work, and, and try and, you know, do some soul searching and figure out, you know, what, what's the best recommendation for the council. And then the last option, the fourth option, is really just to completely unwind the, the CLT, and allows these homes come up on the market, just allow them to go out to market to the, you know, you know, sell them out to the, you know, eliminate the land trust underlying and sell the property and the, and the homes together, then Housing Humboldt would be able to take the revenues that generate off of that, and we could work together to develop a, a new project. One of the things that we've been excited about is potentially bringing additional density to the Arcata Gardens apartments over on Alliance, for example. And so, we could shift gears and use those monies to create, you know, additional rental housing. I know that's kind of a hard pill to swallow, and we've all gotten really excited about, you know, being able to provide ownership opportunities for folks, but, you know, we need to make sure that we have a holistic model that's really sustainable, that, you know, goes beyond just those initial sales. So with that, you know, we do have a recommendation, but we wanna make sure that we, you know, tailor that recommendation to, you know, the desire of the council. We think it'd be a great opportunity, unless Beth has more to add, to open up to public comment, or, or any questions that you may have.
All right, that was all the information. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, for me, it was hard to digest those options without seeing them, but I think I got most of them down. Okay, let's move to any questions or comments from the council, maybe questions before we move into discussion, but we should take public comment, I believe, before we discuss too much, so.
So, I'm wondering if we would have a chance, because I'd like to hear the recommendation, because I don't know if I'll have questions. Is that possible?
Yeah, basically, the recommendation is to not implement this program at this time, not to adopt the resolution, and to give us a few months to, to sort through the, you know, those four options, and try and come back with a coherent recommendation. And then we'd also likely be asking for, you know, a meeting or two to come back with a bridge loan to Housing Humboldt. Right now, they have a seller who's looking for a buyer that doesn't have a program. So they have an eligible buyer, but we don't have a program. So the idea was, we spin up this program, make that loan, and then when the home program comes back online, we'd start using home funds again. Between the time we developed that strategy, that emergency strategy, we realized that, you know, the home program is completely unavailable. So we'd be recommending taking, taking, giving us time to come back with a more formal recommendation, and potentially coming out back with a bridge loan to Housing Humboldt, so they can release this seller, and then that'll give us time to figure out what to do next.
So I guess my question, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding that there were two homes that might be in foreclosure, how will that affect those people?
There are no, there's one home that was just recently foreclosed on, but that, there's, so there's only one.
Okay. Also, I just wanted to say thank you for being here, Beth, and I was super excited that you came. I had the honor as a graduate student to do a Affordable Cooperative Housing for River Community Homes, back when it was Humboldt Bay Housing. So, I love what you guys do. That's a lot to digest, for me personally. So the one foreclosure, if we wait two months, how does that roll out for that particular property?
I think the, the current home is not under foreclosure.
Yeah, the, the home that's for sale is not under foreclosure.
So, there's only one of the two that is?
Yeah, so the, what we're proposing is that we would come back either at your next meeting, or the meeting afterwards, with an agendized item that is to make a bridge loan to Housing Humboldt. Housing Humboldt has an option under the, underlying documents to purchase a, a home if it's going to be lost. And so, we would work through the existing documents that we have, make a bridge loan to Housing Humboldt, Humboldt, they would buy the home, the seller would be released, so the seller wouldn't be affected. We would then have a vacant home in the land trust. Then we'll take the next couple of months to consider what are the options, we wanna hear from the council, which way you're leaning, and we'll come back with that set of options, and try and develop some, some real strong recommendations based on facts instead of dreams and, and...
Thank you for that. Really helped clarify and understand what was gonna happen. Thank you.
Yeah, that was kind of my question, too. Thanks, Councilmember White. Yeah, that was a lot. I definitely am in favor of keeping it as a home buyers program and not converting it to rentals. Other than that, yeah, I just have lots of notes that I have to think of, but thank you.
For me, which I'm sure it's the same as everyone else, three and four aren't the best options. You know, I'm sure you probably, you know, feel the same way idealistically. So if we get to a point where that's all we can do, I understand that. But that would be, those are my least favorite. I mean, you and I both sit in housing groups where we're talking about how to create more land trusts and do all this stuff, so it'd be very disappointing to lose, you know, the 22 that we have. So that's, if we can keep it and it can be functional, that would be ideal. So I look forward to what you guys can come up with.
So I was listening to you don't have enough, you really need 100 to make it work. And, but is there funding out there to find money? There isn't any money out there to figure out how to even buy property, to do a land trust, to do buildings, et cetera, so it's...
We've been looking at the foreclosure intervention and prevention program that's coming out. I think it was passed in legislation, but the HCD is still packaging it up as a program. It's not expected to be released for another year, but that is something that we're looking at to be an infusion into the program to expand our services. But it's been taking a while for HCD to roll it out. So, I mean, there are potential programs that are coming up, and we can look at Cal Home. So it's just a matter of really, you know, focusing on the various sources that are available.
So do you think there's enough money out there somewhere to actually be able to do another project like you did at James Creek?
I would say, I would want to hedge pretty strongly on both the response for, you know, your last question and this question. You know, we have, you know, at least at the city level, you know, the reason we were able to do as much as we did back in the early 2000s was because of the redevelopment agency. We had an inclusionary zoning requirement that if a project had more than a certain number of units, I want to say it was like five, then 10% of the units had to go towards affordable housing. And so for subdivisions, what that meant was if you were going to subdivide and have more than five parcels at the other end of that, at least one was going to go into affordable housing. Projects like the Jane Creek Meadows where you had, you know, 50-plus units that were created, the city was able to use the inclusionary zoning requirement to set aside some land, had to go to affordable housing. And then the question is, well, how do you develop that? The city had a redevelopment agency that went in and purchased the property and worked with Housing Humboldt to do the development. We did the financing, they did all the heavy lifting, and actually cut the projects done. And then we had these underlying agreements. So we were kind of steadily building into the CLT, you know, with this really strong tool of the redevelopment agency. And then the backup financing, you know, back then we had community development block grant program income that we could rely on. We had the home program income that we could rely on. We oftentimes had a home grant that we could rely on. And then we had the redevelopment agency. So we had lots of different resources to draw on to be able to finance these projects. It's gotten really thin. I mean, our sources for where we go after these is really thin. Even if we got a project, I mean, I think that's part of what we want to spend the next three months really evaluating is, can we really develop a sustainable financing program that won't put us in this position? Because I feel like every home that's sold, except for one, in the last five years, we've been in this situation where we're scrambling to try and figure out, how do we finance this thing? And that's just, it's not a sustainable model. So we would want to make sure that we bring forward a sustainable approach.
So at the housing meetings, at the search housing meetings, there's a lot of discussion around land trusts. Does that mean that land trusts can work or not work, or is that going to be a different model?
I think we're hopeful that we can find a way to make it happen. I think, you know, like you're saying, I mean, we were months ago talking about, how do we wind down the land trust? And then the next meeting I had with Beth, she was like, you know what? I really want to make more land trust properties. And so I was like, okay, let's see how we can make this happen, you know? And so I think if you got to the right, you know, I think if you got up to about 100 units for where we're at, you know, it would become more sustainable. And Housing Humboldt now has, and Beth, maybe you can describe the relationship between rural communities and sort of how you can leverage those.
Yeah, so, you know, Housing Humboldt was a relatively small nonprofit with only 105 units in our portfolio. We really needed to have a financial partner in any new project that we were going into. And so it made sense for us to merge with a nonprofit in Mendocino County. And so now we operate with over, I believe we have over 4,000 units in our portfolio. So we have a bigger umbrella that we can, you know, use. The risk is, you know, it's still there. As a real estate developer, we have to speculate. We have to put in a lot of predevelopment money in a project. But we have a bigger umbrella that can kind of mitigate for that risk. So that's, you know, one way that we would, we feel more, you know, stable as an organization to be able to look at another community land trust project. The new construction, you know, model is a little bit harder. The land is really, land values are rising, construction cost is rising. That's difficult, but we could look at existing housing stock and look at more of a community development model where we're looking at existing homes and then separating out the property rights of existing homes through a rehabilitation program. So that is something that we can take a look at to expand our services. It may not be new construction.
And I think, just to add on to that, I think with the capacity to have units that are outside our jurisdiction, Housing Humboldt may be able to, through that partnership, develop resources that it can use across the entire portfolio. And then the last thing I would say is that, you know, as we look towards the future with, you know, infill development, the potential for, you know, condo projects and that sort of thing, we've been talking about bringing inclusionary zoning back to, you know, try and make sure that we've got that affordable housing component. And with, you know, larger projects that are condo that have inclusionary zoning, there's no reason why those couldn't be land trusted as well. We'll have to think through exactly what that looks like because the land is also in common through a condo. But I think there are ways to expand in the future. The problem that we ran into is that we basically, without expanding outside of our borders, we've used up all the land that is readily subdividable. So there's no more single-family homes that are going to be added to subdivisions that we can then extract through an inclusionary zoning requirement into the CLT.
Could I ask a really quick question, just to clarify the condos? What about if you did a planned unit development? As, you know what I mean? So that, because then that would change perhaps the common? No?
No, planned unit development is a term that's pretty common in the real estate market. And generally, what I think realtors are referring to when they say planned unit development is a common wall development, like townhomes or, you know, a condo project that's basically one story tall. You own the entire, if it's two stories tall, you, as a homeowner, would own that entire unit, and then the next one is somebody else's. So the condo projects that, you know, they could be a planned unit development or a common wall subdivision, but they could also be an airspace subdivision that has, you know, multiple levels with units that are owned independently in each of those levels.
I just didn't know if you had another question. Okay, perfect. And just to add my two cents before we move to public comment, I would also agree that options three and four seem like the less desirable and to continue forward with that, you know, homeownership opportunity through the land trust is preferable if we can make it work. And I think that's what everybody wants, but I see some nervous faces at this table. But, you know, I know that you guys will give it your best effort and give us the best recommendation. That's going to actually, you know, be something that will feasibly work. All right, well, let's...
Do one comment before we go to public?
One comment, and then we'll open it up.
I promise. Okay. I just really appreciated your staying power, Beth, and still wanting to somehow, some way, make this work. And I do agree with Meredith and Sarah and Stacy, of course. If we could make this happen to save the current projects and then have another 100 more, it'd be amazing.
Wonderful. Okay, well, let's open this item up for public comment. We will start with in-person public comment first. If you are here in person and want to comment on the land trust programs, please make your way to the podium, and then we'll move to Zoom comments. We will not be going back and forth, and so now is the time. Take it away.
Thank you. First, I want to give an extreme thank you to David and Beth for all of your efforts to help with homeownership at Arcata. It is among the most important facets. Again, I'll refer the council and the viewers in the audience about the Ollie presentation that Beth and Chris Dart did. It's an hour and 20 minutes. There is the full transcription, arcataone.com. It's easier to read, faster to read than to watch the video. Also on arcataone.com, there's a letter to the editor that I wrote in 2019 to the North Coast Journal called "Thinking Outside the Box", and describes how they do housing in Vienna, Austria, where the rents are about one quarter of those of other major European cities. I don't think we could use their techniques here, but it's interesting reading. The, I also will voice that conversion to rentals should be absolutely the last option. I've been exploring the notion of shared ownership as a legal partnership between landlords who don't want to be landlords anymore. And they can create a legal partnership with someone who you call a tenant, but it's actually they'd be a part owner of the property. As a landlord who's getting older, I'm less interested in being a landlord, and it is an opportunity to join forces with a younger person. I have seen this in Berkeley. I think it can happen, and it also can happen with ADUs. It is a kind of a one-at-a-time process, but it's a curious notion. There also can be a new landlord who doesn't have the resources to buy a house for $450,000 or $500,000, but is interested in the benefits, or the partial benefits of landlord-ing, but not the costs or the lack of stability. And I have a tenant who I've had for seven years who has a lower-than-market rent price. He does all the maintenance, and he's, you know, a tenant from heaven, you might say. And it works out real well for me. He can stay there forever, as far as I'm concerned. That's it. Again, this partnership thing, it could be done as an investment pool or one at a time, and it involves seeking out private investors who are interested in that kind of situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Oh, I just, thank you. I just said it a little forcefully, I guess. Okay.
Howdy, howdy. Thank you very much, Beth. That was a really informative synopsis of the program. I think this is a great way for renters, current renters, non-homeowners, to enter into the home market. But I would say that there is a need for affordable rentals as well. I've said it before, but I'll say it again. When you look at the stock of rentals in Arcata, it's owned by three people. And so while they don't technically have a monopoly, they do a very good job at matching each other's prices. And so effectively, you have an environment where people who are renting, even if, you know, there are affordable home buying options present, their income is so taxed that they will never have the opportunity, even as low-income people, to buy homes. And so having a model where we can incorporate, you know, rentals as well as home buying opportunities for people, I think that would be a really nice mix. So more thought to it, to second what Fred said. Vienna does have a really fantastic model, but inclusionary zoning is a key part of that. And all of these things that we're talking about with the Gateway Project are interesting to explore. Maybe one funding opportunity would be a hefty tax on any developers who refuse to build over two stories, potentially. Vienna, for example, any partnership that they do with developers, 50% of the units have to be, have to go to low-income residents. But if your income changes during that time when you're living in the unit, you don't have to move out. So it creates a mix of income types, of household types. And so you don't have this kind of income segregation that we see in a lot of other low-income housing developments that might degrade overall property value over time or create unsafe housing environments. So, I mean, I guess in summation, diversity is really the key here. So if we can have all types and finding out mechanisms where we can encourage, you know, developers to relinquish some control in favor of condos, too. I mean, that's a really huge part, or stepping stone in homeownership as well. So, thank you very much and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I do think homeownership is important for pretty much everywhere in our country, in our region. Having affordable rental options, as we have stated before, particularly if it's owned through a land trust or other institution that's either publicly held or through a nonprofit organization, I think is a phenomenal idea. If we can remove a large portion of the profit incentive on rentals, that would help our community greatly. Secondly, if the land trust could reach out to many of our retirement-aged and older people who are landlords, who have many homes, that they could potentially decide to transfer to the city, to the land trust in order to better our community into the future. Many people have really succeeded and you don't need it anymore. Pay it forward to the community. We can't get more land, but we can get more land into land trusts. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any comments online?
We do. The first one is Sheri. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for the great presentation. It is obviously a complex topic. I'm asking to please focus on homeownership. We have approximately 70% rentals and 30% owner-occupied housing in Arcata. We need to balance out that ratio. Pride of ownership results in a better-maintained home and, by extension, neighborhood. Increased community pride and emotional investment in our community results. You've probably heard of the missing middle. The land trust model is a way to assist the shrinking middle class. Homeownership in a land trust model will assist the missing middle. Market forces are almost insurmountably in favor of, quote, "luxury rentals," end quote. Please do everything you can to assist homeownership opportunities. And by the way, the Vienna model will never happen in this country thanks to the overwhelming opposition to the kind of taxation that facilitates it. Thank you. Thanks for your hard work on this issue.
Our next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, again, to council and to staff. I do support sentiments of the council to continue with the affordable homeownership program. I think as more houses become available in Winsong, it seems to be more in an affordability bracket, and it's very community-oriented. It seems like a great place to expand that. You know, and just to add more to the land trust, the present sentiment from the state infill bills, you know, it definitely focused primarily on rentals. I mean, we will see that in the gateway, and it's important because it sounds like one way or another, there needs to be more housing in this area. But I applaud you for looking for those opportunities, as limited as they are, to continue to make affordable homeownership available. So, yeah, I would support what the sentiment is there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the, well, I'm definitely on the line, same line as Jim and Sheri and a lot of the council members of the third and fourth options being rather disturbing. Overwhelmingly, the community has asked for homeownership opportunities and even more so affordable ones. And community land trusts are something that I delved in to pretty extensively just recently, you know, kind of recognizing our need for housing and affordable housing. And so if, yeah, if we can do all we can to avoid... And so, yeah, if we can do all we can to avoid the third and the fourth option, allowing homes to be sold at market rate that are in the community land trust is kind of a disservice to, you know, why they were established. And then also having them go into the rental model would be sad as well. You know, Sherry brought up a good point of the overwhelmingly high percentage of rental units compared to homeownership in Arcata. So anyways, yeah, so if we could avoid that at all costs. I know community land trusts are kind of booming right now. There's a lot of other communities that are kind of pushing for more of them, Oakland being one of them. So if we can kind of get some examples for them and how we increase that coffer of them, that would be great. So anyways, thank you so much for all you're doing and hold on there. Hopefully, you know, our tenacity will bring us through to the end. Thank you so much.
No other online comment.
Okay. So with that, we can bring it back to the council one more time, just for any more thoughts or direction we want to give our staff as they will bring us back, a recommendation and a few meetings here.
Yeah. You know, I think about how in the Sandpiper development, how that you had to have some nest egg of funds in order to make that program, to be able to buy into that program. And I'm assuming somehow, and, you know, the city has been helping as a nest egg in this first-time homeowners' land trust area. But I would like to see the staff look at this and figure out what kind of options are available, as you recommended, and that that's where we go, and we see what you can come back with in a few months, or whatever it might be. You said two meetings, might be a little bit more than two meetings, but that we don't have to make any final decision at this time, and we can just see what happens, what you're able to come up with. That's what I would move for, is to send it back to staff, let them see what they can come up with without having to go to these drastic options.
Could I add to that? I was hoping that maybe you could look a little bit more into the redevelopment opportunities as opposed to new development as a way to have it sustainable also?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we're going to be really laser-focused on just seeing if we can...
I meant rehabilitation. Did I say redevelopment?
Yes, you did.
Sorry.
I think I knew what you meant.
Yeah.
Trying to bring in units that are existing? Is that...
Yes.
Yeah, I think for right now, we're going to be laser-focused on trying to preserve the 22 units that we have in the program. And just to clarify, Councilmember Stillman, the two weeks, or two meetings, sometime in the next couple of meetings, would be to come back and ask for a bridge loan to HBH, I'm sorry, to Housing Humboldt, so that they can purchase the home that's for sale right now, since we don't have a reliable source of funds to make that transaction happen.
And that would keep it in the affordable housing stock?
Excuse me?
By doing that bridge loan, that would keep it in the affordable housing stock.
Yeah, nothing's going to change in the next couple of months. Yeah. We'll come back to the recommendation.
I'm going to ask another question, then. Would you be, do you want us to move forward on that idea now, or do you want to wait?
No, it's not agendized. I don't think that you can take that action tonight. So we'll either bring it back at your next meeting, or the one following, depending on how quickly we can get the materials together. We do have a model. We've done this a couple of times before, so we do have a model for it.
Okay, so I do have a motion.
I don't think you want us to take any action, right? This is mostly largely informational, because you're going to bring it back.
If, yeah, if we're getting, what do we call them, twinkles?
Okay. So you don't need a motion, just continue and see what you have.
All I want to ask is that when we bring it back, can we have visuals? Absolutely.
Yeah. I would like to see at least the options written out on a, I don't know, a Word document. No fancy PowerPoint or anything.
Yeah, I have to apologize for that. I mean, literally, this has been evolving since Thursday of last week. Can I borrow them for the visual?
No, I think you outlined it quite well, what our options are, whether we like them or not. And hopefully, you'll be able to figure out how to make this work, so we have something that we like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else from us, then we will now move on to item number 12. Everybody? Ooh, okay. Quick bathroom break. And we're so near the end here. Okay, quick bathroom break. Hey, we're going to bring it on back. We're back on camera here. Okay. At this point in our meeting, it's going to take us to item number 12, much-awaited oral and written communications. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on items that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Oh, wow, we are already here. And raise your hand if you are on Zoom, press star nine if you are on your phone line and would like to make comments. So speakers are going to be limited to three minutes, and when it is your time for public comment, you will either, please unmute yourself when you are invited to speak.
Councilmember Stillman, I have been a resident of the Arcata Garden Apartments for eight years. I have paid my rent in full on time every single month. I want to bring attention to how absolutely tone-deaf you are to say there are certainly enough protections for renters if they have lived somewhere for more than one year. I and 11 other people in my block were evicted today. We have all been residents for over two to five years. Thank you. I don't need to hear any more.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and in my climate activism, I've been working with some other people with the Unitarians Climate Action Campaign. And the issue that's been discussed for a long time and is apparently wallowing at the Energy Committee is the gas appliances issue. And as we now know, gas has a lot of reasons for not being promoted into the future in our homes. So I know we approved the Strombrecht Plan that, we didn't approve, you approved, the Strombrecht Plan that's going to allow gas appliances in that development where that gentleman lives with the new construction. So the Energy Committee didn't meet recently. Let's jump over the Energy Committee and get this item on the agenda, especially when we're talking about new housing developments. And, you know, we need to have in place future-thinking, sustainable, thrivable, environmentally sound, and public-health-safe ways of designing our future homes. So that's that. Secondly, when I brought out my three oranges, they were taken from the bowl that I brought to the Playhouse or Playhouse Arts location where they're opening up an arts program in the daytime for unhoused people. I guess today was kind of the first sort of initial thing, and I didn't stick around very much because I had other things I needed to do, but I'm hopefully going to volunteer and be involved somewhat in that because the houseless issue has become just really impactful in my life. And so I just want to share with you that I have communicated with all of you, and some of you have communicated back. It's not been very pleasant. I have been harmed deeply in this community over the 11 years I've lived here. First, being assaulted at the Oyster Fest in 2012, and nothing happened. Secondly, witnessing a stabbing across the street in 2021, when I was at the doors of City Hall and they were locked, and I was so fearful about what was going on, and I had to bang on the doors to get in. And that was just two years ago, and it triggered the 2012 assault. And then having to find out that Nancy, who I had been near the day before, had died, and I had not had pleasant thoughts about her encampment in front of the City Hall door the day before when I went up there to read the bulletin board. And I just want you to know that it's really, really been harmful and painful to me to have all these type of violent and unhealthy things happening in our community, and we can change them so quickly and easily by working together. And I just want you to know that I care, and I maybe care too much, and so it's really upsetting sometimes when I see the responses from people like you.
Yes, good evening. The second draft of the Gateway Plan came out October 22nd last year, three months ago. It specifically did not include things that did not agree with the first draft. This evening, we got an email from the city that the recommended for changes, a table that we've been asking for is out. It's online. The, it's the composite summaries of the committee input for the Transportation Safety Committee on the L Street Couplet. It says, "Maintain current configuration," which means the L Street as it is. "Remove the cost of L Street as an arterial couplet with K Street from figures." I consider that to be a 100% inadequate summary of what they said. I have seen meetings where committee members, and when they viewed the summaries, they said, "That is not what we said." The framework that is designed for the Gateway Plan involves everything being filtered through David before it goes to the Planning Commission and eventually to the City Council. The committees do have opportunities to go back and see things, but you can't just be involved in all these iterations like that. It's an untenable system. I regard it as a poor management. You've heard this from me. If you, on a scale of one to 10, this summary as it exists, I can't even give it a one. It should be revised, gone back, and really say what the committees have said. There are very few people, I don't go to all the meetings, but I go to more meetings than most. Very few people go to both the Planning Commission meetings and the City Council. Different things are said by staff to you and to the Planning Commission and to the committees. Remember how excited we were about the 3D modeling? Everyone was excited. On the new draft plan, it's just still a blank page where the visualizations are supposed to be. The engagement report came out six months ago. It's supposed to be a living, seven months ago. It's supposed to be a living document. You've heard this many times. It does not include the information from the January open house over a year ago. It is on arcataone.com because a citizen did that. I have a handout here, specifically, Councilmember Meredith Matthews asked a question a couple of weeks ago. I have it here. It's a simple question. David spoke for five and a half minutes. I don't think he answered the question. This happens regularly. It happens many, many times. I'm not saying the specific question is an issue that I want to see answered, but this is what I work against, okay? So this is a handout, and it also has the Coincidentally About Homeownership on here. Thank you. And thanks for your time.
Yes, we'll move now to the online public comments.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
Hi. I did want to follow up with Fred's statements there specifically because I feel like after all the time where the comments concerning L Street as far as from both the transportation safety and from numerous committee members have been considered non-comporting and now they're, you know, made available as these conflicting views. And hopefully, as they're presented to the Planning Commission, and it says with alternatives, with opportunities to discuss, and that's just ongoing through the three areas where they discuss it, that it will be flushed out beyond this point, that it doesn't work with the plan, so it shouldn't be discussed. I mean, when that was first presented, it's kind of heartbreaking because we've been spending, you know, so much time, you know, giving community input in so many areas, and numerous ones were considered non-comporting and were not presented and considered as being just discounted. And I hope at this point in time, you know, when you have these, you know, recommendations from so many different areas, that you will, you know, seriously consider what the public is saying. And I don't know if we need to come forward with numbers, but whatever it'll take, I wish that as this information is made available to you, that you can take it under consideration, you know, and give a sense that, you know, we're being listened to and our hard work is being paid attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
No other public comment online.
Okay. With that, we will move to council and staff reports. So City Manager Deemer, are there any staff updates?
No staff reports tonight.
Okay. And so we went down the line last... Okay. And so let's, we went down the line. Last time we started with Alex. Let's start with Stacy this time and go down the line, um, with any updates that we have.
Um, I don't have too many because I'm, we were just discussing that I'm not in as many meetings as I used to be. But, um, I know that Main Street has hired, um, a couple of folks to work and help. So that will be, um, a really big relief. Um, the board has been holding the fort down for two years, I think, volunteers doing everything. And it's been a lot. And so we're really grateful that we've been able to hire some people to actually be paid to do work. So I think Main Street will be really doing some great things.
All right. Um, I just want to say I know, um, a lot of important things were talked about during, um, early oral communications about, um, road safety. And I just want everybody to know that that is a huge priority of the council. Um, we are having, you know, our visiting meetings soon. And, um, I, I just want to know, everybody know that I think is going to be on the forefront of everybody's mind when we're moving forward with what we want our goals to look like, um, road safety. Um, also electrification. I know it's stuck in the, um, Energy Committee. I'm, I'm trying to work and figure out if there's grid reliability to go all electric, but, um, I definitely want to get that agendized soon because it really is important. I feel sad that, um, the Westwood Garden Apartment was all gas. I think that's a bummer. Also, um, the Arcata Chamber Business Leadership Awards is February 18th. Um, it's going to be at the Arcata Community Center. Um, it's going to be wonderful.
Um, the only thing that I have, I had the chance last week to participate in the Core Hub with Humboldt Area Foundation, their offshore wind community benefits network, um, with Crowley, who is going to be the main, they told me not to call it a developer, uh, port builder and leaser from the, the Harbor District to be able to then bring in the wind developers who will then use that harbor import to, uh, you know, uh, create these wind turbines and take them offshore. Um, and so the, their VP was there and then also, um, of their wind services and a, a bunch of other members of their team. But it was really positive meeting with just a ton of, um, the Peninsula Community Services District and like, uh, Peninsula Community, uh, group that has kind of formed around this, um, along with County Supervisor Arroyo, a ton of different, um, representation from all of the different tribes, um, folks from Arcata and Eureka, all there. And so it was a really cool introduction just to see, you know, kind of what their plans are for developing this port and how they're going to bring in these different stakeholders and hopefully to be able to hammer out, um, you know, official and legally binding, um, community benefits package that will, you know, hopefully result in this being a positive, um, economic development for everybody in the community. Um, and then, uh, Councilmember Atkins Alzar kind of hooked me up with some of their other folks, um, that have been doing some outreach here as well. So hopefully, um, coming up here soon, we'll get a presentation from them. I know it's not directly in Arcata, but it is something that's going to affect the, the whole county and honestly state. So, um, it'll be interesting to hear from them and be able to give some feedback and see what, you know, their plans are for that space, um, with the Harbor District. So, um, that was really cool. And I'm glad to be a part of it. So I'll pass it down the line.
Thank you.
Um, so as the newest council member, I had to pick out some committees and the JPA. Um, and I chose specifically two committees that I personally have a passion for, which is to address the unhoused. And I just want to say to you, Joanne, I don't think that we can care too much. So thank you for what you do in our community. I did have an opportunity to attend Arcata House Partnerships Board Meeting. I also had an opportunity to tour the safe parking program. And as many know, we do not have anywhere in Humboldt County other than Arcata, which recently Arcata House Partnership stepped up an extreme weather shelter. And they did that as a temporary stopgap because people were dying. And so they opened up the Grove, which is a homeless supportive housing, permanent housing, one of the two Home Key projects in Valley West, um, until construction begins in their pool area. Unfortunate, or well, fortunately for them, they were able to, um, in several days, ha, uh, serve, uh, over 60, I believe, um, unhoused people, um, when we had those really bad weathers. The bad news is that their funding is gone. And so we're back to not really having, um, an extreme weather shelter now. While their funding is gone, they have to very, be very judicious in how they move forward. So they're, you know, going to have to be careful when they render services. So we do need to come up with a, another, uh, stopgap measure till we can come up with something permanent. Also, I wanted to invite everybody, um, Kuna did, um, some murals with the Home Key residents of the Grove. And they got to do a wonderful mural that will be installed at the park, uh, in Valley West on Howland Drive. So I invite everybody on Sunday, uh, February 5th at 11 o'clock for the unveiling. And also that will follow our community cleanup, which is also on Sunday from nine to 11:00. So I hope the community, um, will come out and celebrate. Um, as the new city liaison for the Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission, I was able to finally, uh, attend my first board meeting. Being it was the first meeting of the year, it was mostly housekeeping. We elected new officers, executive committee, um, and also appointed a new member for the Loan Committee. Um, today I had an opportunity to attend a community workshop on public transit. There were 32 participants. I saw some familiar faces from Arcata. Both our city engineer, Netra Katri, and, um, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, Colin Fisk was there as well as other familiar faces from Arcata in the community. There was discussion by both the community members as well as many organizations such as 350 Humboldt, CRTP, as I said, who attended. Um, and I also had an opportunity to give, um, some input about various concerns for Arcata. There was robust discussion on ways to increase ridership, increased frequency of stops, of course, climate change and how to get those who traditionally do not take a bus onboard. And, um, there was some discussion about a student survey that was done by Cal Poly Humboldt, which highlighted some concerns about students not feeling safe. Um, one of my big takeaways, for me anyway, where folks were looking for visionary solutions and not business as usual. Um, it was like imagination unleashed. And, um, and so the, imagine what a transit system could look like while we're waiting for the money, instead of waiting for the money and doing the imagination. Um, I'm looking forward to the next steps with, um, some follow-up on some of the findings from today and then the next deliveratives, um, or deliverables and, um, some of the alternatives that they've come up with. And that's all I got.
So, um, HTA, I went to HTA meeting today and they're in the process of, um, buying some new buses, hydrogen buses. And they have, um, been able to find buses that have another 100 miles. So instead of 300 miles limit, they'll be able to go 400 miles. And that'll be really advantageous. They're also going to be making a presentation, maybe next month or the month bef, after that, to, uh, Redwood Regional Economic Development Corporation about their future and what they're planning on doing. And one of the things that their goal is, is have connect, connectivity from here down to Ukiah and be able to go into the Mendocino system and work your way all the way down to San Francisco or the Bay Area. So that's a goal of theirs. And also to go east, to do the same, going east. Um, I received a call from the League of Women Voters because they usually have their annual meeting. This year it'll be on April 22nd. And, uh, I spoke to the city manager and she said they have been holding a $500 for a table for a number of years now, hoping that one day that will come back. And so it's a State of the Union that they present. So you're all invited, of course, but I'm just giving you that update there. The meet and greet from Main Street, I, I think maybe, did you mention that it's going to be this Saturday? I mean, this Friday and it's going to be at Septim Trio. I think it starts at 5:30 and it'll be for the Chamber and, um, Main Street members. So I think that's it. And I, Raylina, I sent you a contact and I hope you look at it and you make a phone call to check on your evictions because tenants have more rights than landlords. You may not believe me, but that's my, my take on being a landlord.
I know a good person at Legal Services of Northern California I could put you in contact to. Is that it, Alex? Okay, great. Um, so at that point, we go to dates of future meetings. So we have to confirm a date for some study sessions, which, uh, we did a very robust doodle poll, for an annual meeting with the committee chairs, our annual goal setting, and then also for our fiscal year 2023, 24 budget.
All right. So if you can pull out your calendars to confirm, I'll tell you where, so far, we at least have large majority. Um, starting with annual, kind of in order, annual with committee chairpersons. Looks like Tuesday, February 23rd, 21st, Tuesday, February 21st.
What time will that be?
Um, 5:30 or 6 o'clock. We'll poll the committee members as well, but starting with your calendars. Okay. Are you good?
What time is it begin? I'm so sorry.
Um, it'll be 5:30 or 6 o'clock. That one will probably be 6 o'clock. Okay. All right. So the 21st, February 21st for chairs, committee chairs. Um, and then goal setting, looks like the best date is March 7th. Also the Tuesday. And we'll send these out. Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to put them in your account. Well, it'd be good to put hold. So March 7th. March 7th. Yeah, you're good. Okay. All right. And then for budget hearing, looking at, also the Tuesday, May 9th. They'll all be evening. That look good to you, Kimberly? Okay. All right. And so those are those three. And then your B.
Do we have to like do a, any motion or anything? Or we're just confirming that? We don't have to do a?
Do you want a motion on that?
Do you have to move on that? Okay, well, for item A, then we are consencing these three dates.
All right. I move to accept February 21st for something. I don't remember what that was. March 7th for goal setting and May 9th for budget.
Okay. Motion and a second. Matthews and Stillman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We like that one. And then now on to B, which is a date for a special meeting to meet in closed session for some city manager and city attorney reviews.
So it looks like you've got a majority next week, both on Tuesday or Wednesday night, the 7th or the 8th. So do you have a preference between those two? Uh, either the 7th or 8th of February next week, Tuesday or Wednesday. Do you have a preference, Kimberly? Okay.
I'm fine with Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Okay, yeah, Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay. So Tuesday, the 7th at 6:00.
Yeah, I move that.
I will second that. Matthews and Atkins Alzar, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we will meet in closed session next Tuesday, the 7th at 6:00 PM. And with that, we are adjourned. Oh, okay. Yeah, we're adjourned. You said no!